On December the 2nd, 2020, and I call the City Council meeting to order, and I will call for a roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Drapkin?
Here.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Derry?
You're here!
Counselor Stassen? Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counselor President McKee?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia, and thanks, everyone, for your attendance this evening. This evening, we're continuing our public hearing to consider ordinance number 5098, an ordinance that will amend the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan Map by adding 862.4 gross acres or 662.4 gross buildable acres to the urban growth boundary, which we will refer to as UGB. We're going to assign comprehensive plan map designations to all land within the city's UGB, amend the comprehensive plan policy goals and proposals, and amend the McMinnville Municipal Code, Section 17, the zoning ordinance. The City Council is considering this proposal as a response to a remand order by the Land Conservation and Development Commission and the Court of Appeals for the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan that the McMinnville City Council first adopted in 2003. Since this is a response to a remand from a project that was initially started in 1994, the City Council is considering one set of issues associated with this project, which will be the subject of tonight's public hearing. I want to thank everyone who has joined this public hearing for their participation, or whose land use goal number one is citizens' participation. The intent of that goal is to provide an opportunity for citizens to participate in land use decision-making, the land use decision-making process. However, land use decisions are a legal discussion impacting real property, and the city of McMinnville and McMinnville City Council are held to rigid statutory and local regulations about how to make land use decisions, so the decisions and processes are transparent and fair for all. The City Council must make their decision based upon the federal, state, and local regulations governing the project at the time that it was submitted. All decisions must have the legal findings based on whether or not the land use proposal meets the criteria of the Oregon State Law, the McMinnville City Code, and in this case, the decision of the Oregon Court of Appeals. All testimony in the hearing must be considered with Oregon State laws, McMinnville Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and the Court of Appeals decision in mind as provided in the staff report and proposal. The City Council's decision must be in compliance with these regulations, and the City Council must adopt findings that demonstrate how their decision is in compliance with these regulations. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements, evidence, or a solution sufficient to afford the City Council an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes the ability to object to the City Council's decision of the Department of Land Conservation and Development. The order of procedure for tonight's hearings are set out in detail in our City Code. In brief, we will start with the staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who has signed up in advance to testify first in an order in which they have signed up. Then I will ask anyone present at City Call who would like to testify, and then I will ask anyone who is on a Zoom meeting who has not testified but wanted to testify to do so. After people testify, councilors may pose questions to the mayor to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the City Council has heard from everyone after the three nights of scheduled public testimony, the City Council and the City Council is satisfied that all the information it needs to render a decision. The City Council will then close the public hearing, deliberate among themselves, and announce their decision. Since this is a periodic review work passed issued by the Department of Land Conservation and Development in 1994, the final decision of the City Council will be reviewed by DLCD staff and people who participated in this public hearing process can provide their objections to the City Council decision to the Department of Land Conservation and Development at that time. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone announced before you have said, but want to convey it, ensure that your legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has previously been said. Outside of staff, public testimony will be limited to five minutes. You will have the time. We will time the testimony, provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. Please be sure to keep your testimony relevant to the appropriate state and local regulations that govern growth planning. Since this is a legal proceeding for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and address for the public record, so that you can receive a written notice of the City Council's final decision. Now, tonight's public hearing is continuing from last night, and it is in reference to ordinance number 5098, docket numbers G6212, adopting the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan that will amend that will amend the city's UGB, the Comprehensive Plan Map and Comprehensive Plan and the McMinnville Municipal Code relative to planning and zoning. The City Council is considering the recommendation of city staff of the remand of the city's original McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan that was adopted in 2003. This 2003 plan was adopted after a significant amount of community input, public hearings with the Urban Area Management Commission, the McMinnville Planning Commission, and the McMinnville City Council. We will now continue with the public hearing. Does anyone wish to object to the jurisdiction of the City Council to hear this matter? Seeing none, will the staff please give the presentation of the proposal? And again, Heather has sent out those slides to us in an email, and I'm sure she'll provide those on screen. Heather?
Mrs. Thor, really quick, I just want to note that Counselor Stassen is present. She joined us right after a roll call.
Thank you, Spencer, and welcome, Wendy. Heather?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. We are going to give another staff presentation tonight in case there are new people on the meeting this evening. We have reduced it by 50% or so because we entered what we needed to enter into the record last night. So we're just going to go over sort of the critical, high-level elements of the proposal that's in front of you. And then we do have a response for you from the questions you asked of us last night relative to the public comment that you received. We have sent to you three memos. A memo responding to councillor questions that we received last night, and a memo responding to the public comments that you asked us to respond to, and then an additional technical memorandum based on some of those comments. Those will be entered into the record. And the memo for the public comments will become part of our findings document. So for tonight, I am going to share my PowerPoint with you because this is very visual. DJ is going to be tag teaming with me again, but I want to remind you this is a team effort. And just like preparing all the documents that you received relative to this project, the memos that you received today were worked on by all members of our team throughout the day as we were putting them together for you. So our planning team is Tom Shauer, Chuck Darnell, Jamie Fleckenstein, and Sarah Sullivan. And our legal team is Spencer Parsons and Amanda Giallo and Himmen. We did receive some feedback last night that there was some issues with the display when we were doing our PowerPoint. We're going to try and work through those tonight. And hopefully, we will do a better job. Anyways, this is a project that we're calling Growing McMinnville Mindfully. We do have a project website for it where all our materials are being posted and they're being updated daily there for anybody who wants to access them. It is at www.growingmcminnvillemindfully.com. We were very deliberate about how we chose both this logo and a name for this project because we really want to let the community know that this has been a very thoughtful and intentional process. It's building on what the community has already put together for many years of work and visiting and engagement that occurred in the late 90s and early 2000s. So what we're doing is trying to bring across the finish line a community investment that has occurred over the last 15 years. So ordinance number 5098 does several things. It adopts the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. We call that the MGMUP or the PLAN. It adds land to our existing urban growth boundary. It assigns comprehensive plan designations to the land that's in the urban growth boundaries that will be both the additive lands, if those go through, and also the lands that currently exist in the urban growth boundary. It adopts and/or amends selected comprehensive plan goals, policies, and proposals as an implementation methodology for the growth management plan. And then it amends Section 17 of the McMinnville Municipal Code, which we call the zoning ordinance. And again, those amendments are to implement the growth management plan. The plan itself originally had six appendixes, and since this is a remand of an existing project, where about 80% of the project has gone through and been affirmed by the court system, we are working on the last piece of this. We have tried to keep as true as possible to the previous work and what was adopted by the city in 2003. So the six appendixes, A, B, C, D, E, and F, are moving forward. Some of them have been amended by us. We amended Appendix C, that is brand-new, and that's based on the remand. So this is the area where the court said you need to redo the work. A remand says, go back and do some more work on that effort, and it was the alternative analysis. So Appendix C is all-new for this effort. Appendix T is Comprehensive Plan Policy Amendments. Those are building on the Comprehensive Plan Policy Amendments that were in the original plan. The zoning ordinance amendments are the same. They were in the original plan, and there's some additive amendments in there that we're recommending. The Comprehensive Plan Map amendments are new because it's based on a new map. And then Appendix G is a new appendix for this effort. It's part of our recommendation for the implementation methodology, so that the community feels like they're involved in the planning of how this new UGB land will look and serve the future community. We're working from a data set that's from 2003. So we have to work within the legal record of this project, and this project was originally adopted in 2003. Some of the data set was adopted prior to then. The population forecast, the housing needs analysis, and the economic opportunity analysis were all adopted in various years prior to 2003. The plan is working towards a population target of 44,055 people. When the plan was originally put together, the city's population was 28,500 people. It is now 34,000 people. And so when the plan was put together, the intent was that 9,000 of those people would live in the existing UGB prior to 2003. And then the plan amendment for a new UGB would accommodate 6,500 people. The UGB amendment, which I'll describe to you, has both a Phase 1 and Phase 2 aspect to it. The new housing units to accommodate this growth of 44,000 people, 15,000 new people from that time period was 6,000 housing units. Of those 6,000 housing units, 3,500 were intended to be built within the existing UGB prior to 2003. And then 2,500 housing units were not going to be accommodated in the existing UGB, and that's what the UGB amendment was meant to accommodate. And that's all described in Appendix A and Appendix B of the plan. After going through a land needs analysis, the city determined that it needed 921.4 gross buildable acres to serve that population target with a Phase 1 and Phase 2 UGB amendment. Phase 1, the Phase 1 UGB amendment occurred in 2003 with 259 gross buildable acres. And the Phase 2 UGB amendment is the effort of this proposal tonight that you're considering, and that's for 662.4 gross buildable acres. We talk about gross buildable acres because we're looking at where the city can accommodate future growth, and we don't talk about it typically in terms of gross acres except for in the Comprehensive Plan Map. So this is the original submittal that was submitted in 2003 by the city to achieve the land need then. Both the green areas and the pink areas were all part of the original submittal. Only the green areas actually were accepted by the state. All the pink areas were challenged by opponents and were not accepted as part of the city's future UGB. This first submittal was for 881 gross buildable acres. Of the acreage that was accepted into the UGB, it was a total of 259 acres, including 217 acres for residential future needs. And then this site right here, which is a second McMinnville High School site for 42 acres. However, we submitted for more than what was approved, which meant that we still hadn't achieved the outstanding land need for our future housing, employment, and livability for a population of 44,055 people. So we still needed to work on it and bring some more land supply to bear. So the city worked through it, and they submitted another submittal in 2005 to the state. That submittal was again challenged. It was approved by the state. It was appealed to LCDC. It was challenged after LCDC approved it into the Court of Appeals in 2007. And then it stayed in the Court of Appeals till 2011. It got remanded back to the state who remanded it back to us. In 2013, we decided to walk away for a while from the effort. We had spent a lot of time, resources, and community time on the effort, and at that point in time, the city was battle-fatigued and just felt like they needed some time away from it. The Court of Appeals determination came out. The petitioner, so the opponents, who appealed it, said that there were three assignments of error in terms of how the city conducted their work. The three assignments were how we selected land, the amount of park land that we said we needed, and the amount of high-density residential land we said we needed. The court rejected Number 2 and Number 3 outright in terms of the assignments of error without further discussion. So they said these didn't merit these assignments of error. It did say that the selection of land, it felt that the city hadn't erred, but the city had applied the wrong process. And if they applied the process in a different way, they may come up with a different map. And so the city needed to go back and do that work in terms of the process that the court described. And that's what we're doing. That's what we've done in the past year, and we're bringing that map to City Council. In January 2020, City Council directed us to do this work, and you directed us to do this work after we had a discussion about land need in McMinnville, the affordable housing issues that we're facing right now because of constrained land supply, and the fact that if we worked on a new UGB effort, we could be facing a long court system and battle again and wouldn't be able to bring new land supply into the city for quite a long time. And so the City Council decided, let's build on the investment that's occurred in the past that this community's already invested in. There's one last issue that we need to respond to. Let's respond to that and see if we can get this done. So we are working on a remand from the project that was adopted in 2003 called the MGMUP. What's unique about this is we have to use the data and the statutes from the timeframe in which this was entered into the record. So we're working under statutes and data from that time period in 2003 and the legal record that was established. After doing the work that was in the court decision in terms of how to determine what land to select, the city staff recommendation to use the map that you see right here. This is our proposed UGB amendment. I shared with you that we had a land need of about 600, that this was about 662.4 gross buildable acres to serve the city moving forward for a population of 44,000. That equates into 862 gross acres because it includes land that cannot be built on that's either floodplains or waterways or steep slopes. Another element of ordinance number 5098 is that we do have land that's in the UGB that came in in 2003. That's that 259 acres. And we're recommending a new comprehensive plan designation for all land within the UGB that is considered housing land, residential land. We're recommending that it be what's called an urban holding comp plan designation. And what that means is that for those properties that are in the UGB but still in the county, so they're not in the city limits, they don't operate under city zones, they operate under county zones and county regulations, but they're in the UGB. So they're in a pipeline where they can annex into the city if they choose to do so and develop at a city intensity and density. And that's why we're describing this as an urban holding comp plan designation. For those properties that are already in the UGB, which were the ones that came in in 2003, none of them have actually chosen to annex into the city. But they are all affected with this action by that change in a comprehensive plan map designation from residential to urban holding. It does not mean that they're going to come into the city, and it does not mean that they're coming into the UGB. They already are. It's just changing the comp plan designation. Excuse me. I've been in meetings all day. So the final outcome of all this is for the overall land supply need for the growth management plan for a targeted population of 44,000, the city of McMinnville is looking at a UGB amendment including Phase 1 and Phase 2 of 921.40 gross buildable acres. This will serve approximately 2,500 dwelling units, so those dwelling units we talked about that need to be accommodated because they can't be accommodated inside the city limits, and 254 acres of park land, 106 acres of employment land, and 121 acres of other public and semi-public uses. I have been on the phone today with several people who are asking how much housing is it meant to be developed down in this area. We are anticipating that this is probably about 1,500 housing units down here based on the fact that it was assumed that 1,000 housing units would go into these UGB lands that were first brought in in 2003. These are not redeveloping into housing. And most people in this area have called me after they received a notice again to say they're still not interested in annexing into the city and redeveloping. But by Oregon land use law, in terms of how we apply housing capacity, we are still on paper saying that these are going to meet 1,000 housing units for the city's future needs. It's important to realize that property owners have the right to decide if they want to annex into the city or not, so the action of the city does not force them to annex in. I wanted to share, last night we had some public testimony from a resident who was very concerned because they didn't feel, they feel like they had been, had not had the opportunity to learn whether their property was going to be impacted by a UGB amendment and felt that this had not been advertised very well. And I just wanted to share a comparison of the original map that was submitted by the city in 2003 and the maps that we're proposing today. So if you look at the pink areas here, which is the areas that did not come into the city, and if you look at the map that we are proposing today, they're very similar. Where they differ are these two properties right here are actually two properties that we are recommending to come into the city instead of this property that's right here, this property that's right here, and this property up here. We are recommending that there be an exception area down here, come into the city, and an exception area up here, come into the city, oh, right here, come into the city, and another exception area here. So less farmland, more exception areas, and then this over here, this sort of area in the southwest is the recommendation for the map. The gentleman who was testifying last night lives up in this area and was upset that it's proposed for development behind him, which is understandable. And he had just recently bought, from what I can understand, in the last couple of years, his property. But this West Hills South parcel that we call the study area has always been proposed to be part of the UGB amendment. So I'm going to turn it over to DJ now, who's going to walk through what the Court of Appeals roadmap was for us in terms of doing the work that we did.
Thanks Heather. This is going to be shorter than last night going through this. Some of you are probably applauding that, that heard this last night because this is a very, this is technical. But it's important that you understand, that the audience understands why we ended up where we did. The Court of Appeals and their decisions said, nice try, but there is, but you've interpreted the intersection of the goal, goal 14, which is the urbanization goal, and statutes that helped to implement that goal in the wrong sequence. And nobody in the state had been interpreting the, how urban growth boundaries should be expanded in the way the court laid out up until that time. So this was all quite new. This wasn't the fault of anybody who was working on the plan at that time. This essentially set out a new process for how urban growth boundaries get amended. We, having realized that McMinnville has been at this for a very long time, wanted to follow and committed to following this roadmap as closely as possible to avoid any other pitfalls. So the process that court, that the court laid out, step one is to determine land need. Step two is to determine the adequacy of candidate lands to meet two Oregon statutes, ORS 197-298-1 and 197-298-3. And then lands that are adequate to meet urban land needs, that make it through that screen, if you will, are then analyzed under step three to determine their suitability. And that's more of a comparative analysis. So that's the process that we went through. Next slide. We started out determining land need. This is a summary of where we, of phase one and phase two. Heather kind of went through this with you a little bit ago. I wanted to point out that in the residential zone, or excuse me, not zone, plan designation, there are a number of different uses, not just housing, but parks, schools, churches, governmental facilities are all allowed within and planned for to be inside of areas that are designated on the plan map for residential. So that was 810 acres and then 106 acres of commercial and a 46 acre surplus of industrial land. That is very, been very important from the city all along, from going back to 2003, that that surplus be maintained so that the city can carry out economic development strategy. So that's the land need for phase one and two. Next slide. There were some adjustments to that land need based on some things that happened inside the urban growth boundary between 2003 and now. There were some land use efficiencies, there were some changes in the residential inventory, the Shagwood Farm Conservation easement, and there was the addition of a park. So when you made, we made those adjustments, the remaining land need after the phase one additions and after those changes that have occurred in the time period between then and now, a revised total land need is 665 acres. Next slide. This is how those 665 acres break down. You can see is that nothing has been added for commercial, but residential has been reduced because of the additions in the phase one part of the process. Next slide. So we started, we took that, we have that land need. How do we fulfill it? Well, we drew this one mile boundary around the urban growth boundary, and this is laid out in state law. Or it's, I can't remember if this is law, or I think it's in state rule, but in any event, it has the effect of law. We made a circle around the boundary and then we identified lands that could be urbanized, that didn't have building, a lot of constraints. And this map shows their soil class capability. The areas that are yellow and green are lower category soils, they're class three, four, and higher. The areas that are red and orange are class one and two soils. So the, and then you can see the black lines that make up the study areas. The next map shows something that was very important to this analysis. We had to select lands from those study areas in a priority order. The priority sequence is, now it doesn't necessarily mean we have to take in all the green areas before we can take in yellow areas or red areas, but we, we had to consider the areas in green first because they're exception areas and those are highest priority for inclusion in the UGB. Next is the areas that are shown yellow, they're predominantly class three, four, and higher soils. Those are less productive agricultural soils. And then the areas in red are class one and two soils, which are the lowest priority for inclusion. Next slide. So to evaluate how, and screen those areas and determine which ones are adequate and suitable, we used factors that are included in goal 14. This is what the court laid out for us as a procedure. And there are, factors five and seven were important for determining adequacy. And then all of the factors were considered to determine areas that were suitable in that comparative analysis that I referenced. We built a big data table and we've got lots and lots of, we had a report for every one of those study areas you saw on the map. There was a huge, probably, I don't know, four or 500 hours worth of staff time went into doing this evaluation, rating all of these criteria on a scale of one to three and coming up with an evaluation. And so here's what that led to. Next slide. We started with the exception areas and three of those exception areas were determined to be both adequate and suitable to come into the urban growth boundary and they're circled in orange here. The remaining areas were not suitable and were inadequate to include them. So when we did so, we made an adjustment then, if those lands came into the urban growth boundary, they would cover some of the need. And so we determined how much of that need they would meet. And we'd made adjustments to our remaining land need over on the right. And you can see most of those areas came, that came in, provided residential and a little bit of commercial uses. And so we still had unmet needs, so we went to the next priority of, next set of priorities. And those are the areas that are yellow that you see on this map. The ones that are circled, there are four of them, were determined adequate and suitable to come into the urban growth boundary. And so we did an adjustment again on our remaining land need in the table down below. Now, I've got an arrow pointed at West Hills South. It was very important because West Hills South triggered a statutory provision that allows us to bring land into the urban growth boundary that is of lower priority because it's needed in order to extend services to areas of higher priority. West Hills House is higher priority. But these lands to the southeast of it are where sewers have to be lay, have to flow, all the sewage has to flow, it float, if the landscape falls to the southeast there, they have to be brought in in order to extend sewers to this area. And the next map shows schematically what that sewer layout looks like. We had an engineering firm that came in and looked at all of this. And you can see that West Hills South areas is dependent on the other areas to the southeast of it coming in so that they can be brought in. The other thing I want to point out on this map is Cosine Creek, which is the creek that runs east-west at the bottom. That's the bottom of, that's the urban growth boundary and it kind of separates the areas that are going to be urbanized above it from areas that will remain agricultural and will be below it. Next slide. So these are the four areas, the additional study areas that came in in order to extend services up to West Hills South. And when we do our math exercise and include that land in the urban growth boundary, all of our need is met. There's nothing, we didn't need to even consider other class two soil areas or any class one soil areas. And so we were essentially done at this point. And this is a very different approach to how this analysis was done from in 2003. It led to a different result and as the court pointed out, might occur, it in fact did. But it does address the need fully and all of these areas can be served and, and it complies with the guidance that the court provided us. So the next step in this process is to decide, here's what this looks like, going back to the map of the UGB proposal that Heather showed earlier. How do we get from these areas that are essentially just blank, empty lands on a map to, to something that looks like they belong in McMinnville? And so Heather's going to go through this, the implementation process with you.
Yeah, so there was some discussion about this last night and I've had some discussion with people today who have been calling about it. Part of a UGB submittal per Oregon law, so ORS 197.296 states that cities need to show how they're going to achieve their housing need and the density that they're planning for with policies and programs and regulations. So that's what's called the implementation methodology. And that's why it's important that that's adopted with the UGB amendment because it's the commitment of the city that they are going to work towards achieving what they have said they will do. So appendix D, E, F, and G is the implementation methodology for this effort. So the implementation methodology is for both phase one and phase two in terms of how we are moving forward, since that is, the two phases together serve the UGB amendment for this plan. So to get back to that original discussion where we said in McMinnville, under the residential comp plan designation, we have all these different uses. And one of the things that the opponents said were, how are you going to ensure that the land that you're bringing in for parks and schools and all these other uses that will have this residential comp plan designation on it is actually going to be parks, schools, and other uses? And so one of our recommendations is this framework plan and area planning process to do that. For all the land that's in the UGB, both phase one and phase two, this is a high level map of how, based on our analysis of, and how the land could be suitable and adequate to serve the land needs. This is the high level visual of that, where residential will go, where there's potential greenways and parks and things of that neighbor nature. The plan itself is, the hallmark of the plan are these neighborhood activity centers. So this identifies the location of two activity centers. It identifies the potential location of high density residential development around those activity centers. And then, and it just sort of spells out where we think in the future we may need neighborhood parks and community parks based on our adopted parks and master planning process. So this is a very high level 30,000 foot framework plan. The city, we're then recommending that the city go through a process to ensure that this moves forward as originally planned by doing area plans for these different areas in the UGB expansion area. The areas' plans will be for a couple of hundred acres. And that's where you bring the property owners together and the surrounding property owners and start talking about, you know, bringing that planning process down to the 10, 15,000 foot level. Where, where, where can we refine this a little bit better in terms of identifying where parks can be and where different types of housing types can be and things of that nature? And the area plan is something that the city will officially adopt as part of the comp plan, and so that books it. What that means by booking it is that the city is then committing to that area plan, moving forward and developing in the way that the community put that together. We are recommending area plans for all the different areas in the UGB. Some of the areas like Booth Ben Road and Riverside South, it will be pretty self-evident what the area plan should be because there isn't a lot of opportunity for redevelopment there. And then other areas like the southwest area here and up here by Fox Ridge Road and the high school site, there may, it may be a little bit more complicated. And so appendix G sort of walked through the different types of needs that have been identified and how they can be achieved in those different areas. Then when property owners want to actually come into the city, annex into the city, they need to show a master plan as to, as part of their annexation agreement with the city council, a conceptual master plan that shows how they're going to meet that area plan that the community put together with their development. And I think that this planning process will help the community feel a little, a little bit more, a little better about what, what this will look like here in terms of future development. It will also give more opportunities for community engagement and involvement in what it looks like. And there will be several different milestones along the way as it goes through a decision making process to ensure that it, that the development there is achieved the way the community envisioned it. So the comprehensive plan map itself, that's why we're recommending this urban holding zone and putting it on all the UGB lands so we can go through that area planning process in advance of that land coming into the city and developing as residential land. The other things to point out here is there is some industrial land that's proposed in this comprehensive plan map amendment up here in what we call Riverside North and right here along the McMinnville Water and Light property. That's a land use efficiency to backfill 40 acres of industrial land that we're recommending be rezoned to commercial land here on the southern side of Highway 18 to help facilitate some infrastructure improvements that need to occur there so that the rest of the industrial land behind it can develop. So appendix E is a zoning ordinance amendments. In the, in the zoning ordinance amendments, we only have recommendations for you that are based on this growth management planning. So it's the high level amendments for how are we going to achieve the housing that we said we were going to achieve and the density we said we would achieve. So that's why you only see in these zoning ordinance amendments, this high density residential zone, that's the R5 zone that will be new for McMinnville and will be multifamily only as a housing product in that zone. Then there's the neighborhood activity center overlay zone, that's an overlays that operates much like our northeast gateway overlay and our downtown design overlay that will be applied to land. And, and there's criteria in terms of how developers will achieve the covenants of the neighborhood activity center overlay zone and they'll have to go through a process of review for that. And then, and both of these were in the original plan. So these are original zoning ordinance amendments that went through a fairly rigorous community engagement and public process back in the 2003, 2004, and 2005, as it went through different amendments then. And we're introducing this area master planning process as part of this effort here. The comprehensive plan policy amendments are kind of like a phase two as well. So when the city first adopted the MGMUP in 2003, it had a lot of comprehensive plan policy amendments that had been reviewed and adopted by the city. And then when the city decided it wasn't going to move forward with this in 2013 and they weren't able to get success of that UGB land being inside the UGB, they repealed a lot of those policies. So that's what we're bringing back are the policies that have been repealed previously to support this growth management plan. We have added a few proposals and policies to this work based on what we've heard from city council that was important to them for growth management purposes. So things like not developing in hazardous areas or how to mitigate hazard, hazard lands. And then proposals about future long range planning efforts to go through some natural resource inventory and protection, some goal five cultural resource inventory and protection. And then there's also proposals in there about updating all the public facility plans. So we had some discussion last night about sort of the, what you would call the macro, what I would call the macro level of long range planning and the micro level of long range planning and the process that we need to take to get to that micro level. There's, I sent an energy on, on the city council to get to that micro level through this effort, but this effort is really the macro level. So we're up here, we're identifying what's the future land supply and we're developing policies about growth management. After a UGB amendment, as the city goes through a UGB amendment process and is successful, they then do public facility planning and update all their public facility plans. And the intention behind that is you're now updating all your infrastructure plans to accommodate this new land that you've brought in for, for future growth. So this is when you update your transportation system plan and your wastewater plan and your water plan and your parks and rec master plan. So that's all been planned in our long range work plan to happen anywhere between 2021 and 2025, based on resources and timing. We are recommending the TSP and the Parks and Rec Master Plan to be first in the 2021 to 2023 time period. They are dependent on resources, but we think those are the first two that should move forward. Wastewater is in a pretty good situation right now and water, we're working with Mac Water and Light on the water plan. At the same time, after you do this future land supply and develop policies about growth management, you update some of your goal inventories and so that's, and goal inventories, that's Oregon land use speak for, or Oregon land use goals that we're trying to achieve. And that means some of the discussion we had last night about cultural resources. After you have adopted, after you know where you're growing into, you're going to want to start inventorying that land to identify where there are cultural resources that you want to protect. And that's the discussion we had about the potential burial ground in one of the study areas that are recommended for inclusion. We'll want to look at other cultural resources too. This is also where you look at natural resources that you want to protect on a more micro level and you start adopting policies for them. So you'll, so we adopt the inventories, which gives us the authority to regulate and mitigate and protect those resources. And then we adopt the policies about how we want to regulate, mitigate, and protect those, those resources. And then we go down to the micro level where we develop zoning ordinance amendments to achieve these policies or to achieve what we've adopted here in our public facility planning. And at the same time, we're doing zoning ordinance amendments, we're applying these two efforts to the area planning. This is what we brought in as a new element to McMinnville to ensure that we're protecting what's come out of this effort when we're going through the area planning and that the public facility planning is helping to determine the area planning. We want to make sure we have the infrastructure in the right place to support what we want to do in the areas. So that's kind of the, you know, a little chaotic, but the flow chart first, the macro level long range planning down to the micro level. And if you remember when I first got here four years ago, I shared with city council a chart I had put together of deferred long range planning in McMinnville. And, and what I thought would be, it would take for resources to be able to bring us up to a place where we were at a level of contemporary planning with, with our neighbors in terms of the types of planning we should have on the books. The reason it's all deferred is because this didn't happen. So we struggled so much trying to get this done that we weren't able to go to the other efforts and that's why there's all this deferred planning happening here. Lastly, for the McMinnville UGB amendment, we do like to share that 44% of it is exception areas. That is a priority for this, for the Oregon land use program to grow into exception areas. And so that is a big piece of the McMinnville UGB. The UGB amendment itself accounts for two tenths of 1% of Yam Hill County's overall acreage, so that puts it in perspective in terms of size. And then it accounts, it will potentially urbanize four tenths of 1% of Yam Hill County's exclusive farm use land. So it works really hard to continue to protect farm, exclusive farm use land in Yam Hill County because one, it's an industry here and also it is a beloved environment for everyone who lives here. The public engagement, we did work hard during COVID to do public engagement and try to get the word out to people as much as possible and, and help them understand to get the word out to people as much as possible and, and help them understand what the program was. And we are in the public hearing process now with city council, and the public hearing process is scheduled to continue with the Yam Hill County Board of County Commissioners on December tenth. We did send out mailed notices to both impacted property owners for both phase one and phase two, and then adjacent property owners. So any property owner within three hundred feet of a boundary of an impacted property also got a mailed notice from us. We sent out two of those. And then we published the, the public hearing notice in the news register three times. We need to enter every night into the record, the public testimony that we're receiving that's written. In the age of COVID, we are accepting a lot of written testimony and entering into the record. So these are the letters that we received last night after the public hearing from two people who participated or were in the audience last night, and then three that we have received today. We are sending these to city council daily so that you have these to read, and then we're also updating our website daily with these. So as people send them in, I'm trying to confirm with them that we've received them and that we will forward them on to city council and update our website. There were some questions last night that came up with the public testimony that we received in the hearing, and city council asked us to follow up on those. So the following slides are following up on those specific questions from the public hearing last night. They're, they are from the testimony that we heard from Sid Freeman representing friends of Yam Hill County. So DJ and I are going to sort of tag team this one again. And it really focused on our, the need for high-density housing and medium-density housing and whether or not NACs restricted it or whether it was flexible throughout the city in terms of the UGB. So DJ, if you want to take the first?
Yeah, thanks Heather. So the, the comment was, there's, there's, there's distance restrictions in the NACs that apply to high and medium-density housing and how far away that housing can be from the NAC center. And the understanding on, since, I understand his, his concern, but his, his understanding of, of those distance criteria was that once you got beyond those distances, high-density housing and medium-density housing wouldn't be allowed. And that in fact is not the case. The, the reason for including distance limits on high and medium-density housing inside of NACs, and they apply inside of NACs, not outside, was really more of an urban, had more of an urban design aim. They were intended to ensure that there was a break in the housing form in between these neighborhood activity centers and to promote more compact nodal development as opposed to strip development, particularly along arterial streets that link neighborhood activity centers together. So this next slide shows an illustration from the plan that demonstrates this point. This is, this slide was in, it dates back to the two thousand three plan. If we can advance it, Heather?
Yep.
So along the top with the big fatter arrows, imagine that's a, that's a busy street. You see that the neighborhood activity center is just immediately south of that is kind of shaded pinkish reddish. That's, that's the commercial district. And then around it, rather than having a lot of apartment buildings and higher densities housing strung along the arterial, that higher-density housing is in, is in a node around that activity center. And so those distance limitations were put into the plan in order to try and create this kind of a nodal development form as opposed to a linear development form within the neighborhood activity centers. And the next slide shows why this is kind of, why this is important. Look down in the southwest where the two neighborhood activity centers are proposed. What this distance limitation inside the NAC does is it prevents, it kind of pushes compact urban development in, around that neighborhood commercial-serving center and, and tries to then encourage more diversity of housing in, on that roadway that connects those two, those two activity centers together that are in the southwest, the one that's, well, the, the one that's along Fellow Street and the one that is just east of Hill Road. And so it really didn't, it really wasn't ever intended to limit R five, R four, R three housing outside of those activity centers and to restrict medium-density housing there. It was really intended to help create a more compact urban form within those neighborhood activity centers.
Yeah, so the other, to follow up on the question, the follow-up was, does the city's policies prohibit locating high and medium-density housing in areas other than the NACs? And the answer to that is no, they don't. They actually encourage it. So there's a new proposed policy seventy-one point twelve, which states that land-zoned R five should be located within existing or planned transit corridors. In addition, it should be dispersed throughout the community and integrated into neighborhood areas so that high-density housing is not concentrated and segregated in one specific area of the city. The new proposed policy seventy-one point eleven says that high-density residential content, high-density, the high-density residential zone contains housing densities from eight to thirty units per acre, depending on where the high-density dwellings are located, and the highest density is being in the downtown commercial core and the neighborhood activity centers. So there's a broad range of density within this high-density residential zone, and the policies are, are pointing to the fact that they'd like to see the highest density occurring within the neighborhood activity center and within the downtown commercial core, because that's where the amenities and services are and we're, and to meet fair housing provisions, we want to make sure that everybody has access to those. There's also another policy that's already in the code. It was adopted in two thousand three as part of this effort, and that's existing policy seventy-one point one three. And that's a locational policy as to where high-density R five should be located throughout the community. And so it walks through how, how it should be located in terms of its proximity to major collectors or arterials and transit quarters and things like that. We are recommending deleting number two out of this, which is a buffering policy, which says that high-density residential should be buffered by topography, landscaping, collector, arterial streets, et cetera, et cetera, from low-density residential areas. That's actually contrary to our great neighborhood principles at this point in time, which, which encourages a variety of housing types in neighborhoods. Then there's a proposed amendment to the existing policy ninety. So this is in the code right now and has been in the code. It came in the code in two thousand and three as well. But what this says is that greater residential density shall be encouraged to locate along da-da-da-da-da, and then within neighborhood activity centers. So the neighborhood activity center policies that are in the proposed comp plan are just relative to that neighborhood activity center in terms of the distance requirements, much like DJ just described. And the rest of the policies talk about all the other places where high-density, medium-density housing can go in the city. Additionally, we are recommending a proposal eight point seven, which states that the city should evaluate its locational policies for low, medium, and high-density residential development to ensure they're sufficiently allow for what we're calling finer-grained zoning and land use with a mix of housing types and densities within a neighborhood without segregated land use patterns that can result from conventional zoning districts uniformly applied to large land areas. And what that means is many cities get into the habit of putting all their apartment complexes in one area, which sort of creates this segregated tenement community. And, and the, the best neighborhoods are the neighborhoods that provide housing for all types of people and generations and income levels. And then finally, there's an existing policy that's already in the comp plan. It was adopted again in two thousand three as part of this effort, seventy-one point oh nine. This points to the R four zone and where it should be located. And it talks about the, the variety of different places where this can be located throughout the community. We are recommending an amendment which isn't in your proposal that you have right now. So I'd like to bring it up tonight, and if, and if you are supportive, I would bring it forward as amendment for you to consider tomorrow as part of your final deliberation. But we'd like to add to this existing policy seventy-one point oh nine, an addition that talks about the need for, that R four can locate on a local collector street within six hundred feet of a collector or, of a collector or arterial street. And what that means is that R four doesn't just have to be on the major roads, it can be a little bit off the major roads as long as it has access to the major roads. And this is in the proposed McMinnville, this is in the, in Appendix C under the proposed zoning amendments for the R four zone. So what this amendment would do is it would sync up with that. And then we're again recommending the deletion of number six, which is all about segregating different types of housing types from each other. The last question was about the acreage for the R five zoning. So the, the comment was that the residential housing needs analysis describes a need for seventy-two acres of R five zoning. And this proposal only states the need for thirty-six acres of R five zoning in the expansion land. How can the city meets its, meet its residential need if it does not count for the seventy-two acres of R five zoning? So the residential housing needs analysis identified the need for a hundred and twelve acres of multifamily housing. So a housing needs analysis talks about housing types. And the housing type in this was apartments back in two thousand one, when this was put together. An apartment in McMinnville is a triplex or larger multifamily housing. So the, it identified the need for a hundred and twelve, twelve acres to, to support this multifamily housing. And this is both the R four and the R five zone that allow this housing type. Table three of the plan, which is on page twenty of the plan, then said that based on land use efficiencies, the city determined that that identified need could be met with forty acres of R four zone land and seventy-two acres of R five zone lands. That's where the R seventy-two acres comes from. The city planned originally for all seventy-two acres of that R five zone land to occur within these neighborhood activity centers. Thirty-six acres were going to be in the existing UGB with two neighborhood activity centers planned for within the existing UGB, and thirty-six acres was going to be in the expansion area. And that is found in table seventy-one of your findings document, page one sixty-five. So then table two and table three of the plan, and then table seven, table eight of Appendix B, then indicate that that acreage that we're talking about for R five zoning and the need for multifamily housing actually equates to one thousand six hundred and eighty-five apartment units as a housing type for this planning horizon. So that's how we got to the acreage number. So what we did as staff is we said, if there was, if there was the intent that we would have one thousand six hundred and eighty-five apartment units as a housing type to meet our future housing need for our community, how do we know what's been achieved thus far and what we need to achieve with the expansion land? So we then went through a process of, of going through all of the zoning amendments that have occurred to identify where there have been apartments built at, at the density that's discussed for the R four and R five zone. So we developed a new technical memorandum for you called seventeen B. We originally had done it based on acreage, but then we went back and visited it after last night and looked at the housing type to make sure we're meeting the housing need that we've described. We started looking at units of multifamily housing. And what that shows is that there's been nine hundred units of apartment housing that's been developed within the existing UGB since the adoption of the two thousand three plan. So even though because this plan got held up in the court system, that we never actually achieved those NACs, those two NACs that were identified to occur within the existing UGB in that land has since developed, the apartment units that are described in the housing needs analysis have occurred through other processes. So fifty-three percent of, of the overall planned need for that housing type has already been built within the existing UGB. And because of that, we are comfortable coming forward with the recommendation that it's thirty-six acres of R five land that's needed in the expansion area, just as it was originally described in two thousand three, submittal and affirmed by the court. So that's the end of our presentation for you this evening, if you have any questions for us. Hello?
Mayor, you're muted.
Excuse me. Thank you Heather for that presentation and DJ. And so does any counselor have any questions of staff at this time? Zach?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. And additionally, thank you for response, the quick response and detailed response to the questions we all lobbied at you last night and asked you to answer. Still working through those, but a couple of quick ones. You had, put up a, a, a slide that I think is the center around most of my questions before we get into tonight's hearing. And it was the slide around, you know, long-range planning context slide and had the hierarchy of-
Flowchart.
Had a little, little flowchart. And I, I totally agree and understand with where you're asking our heads to be. And my questions around the specificity on the policy and code things are because part of this ordinance is changing the code. And so I want to make sure I really thoroughly get a good sense of what each word means and the implications and why we're changing it and what those are doing. And so I'm having a hard time doing both at the same time when this ordinance changes so much relative to all of those things in that, in that flowchart. So I just wanted-
And, and I'm not saying you shouldn't be, I, I think it's great that you're paying that type of detailed attention, and you should be. What I'm trying to point out is that the proposed amendments in the comp plan and the zoning ordinance are really specific to growth management policies. So they're specific to the housing need that we've described and how we're going to achieve that housing need that we've described. And it's, and it's not specific to all these other issues yet. Those issues all start, we start looking at all those other issues after we've gotten through the growth management and land supply discussion. So that's why you don't see proposed amendments for everything else that we've heard about in the last four years that people want to, to have a discussion about in terms of zoning ordinance amendments and comp plan policies.
And, and one other thing I'll add on to the tail end of what Heather said, Counselor Gary, is it's also in the context of the remand from the Court of Appeals, we're looking specifically at the one remanded issue, which is the methodology used to select the lands. And the, and the policies and the, and the zoning ordinance amendments that she's talking about are all geared toward implementation of the, the roadmap, the, the so-called roadmap that we've developed in response to that decision.
Understood. And so in effort to thread the tiniest needle possible to respond to the remand as best we can, we are, we are, we are trying not to change anything we don't have to that doesn't do anything but bottom line better are, respond to the remand, specific remand issues, correct? And so what is changed in the code and the changes that you guys are making, and even as to right now, we just from last night to tonight have changed a few words, those are all in service of better responding only to the remand challenge, correct? That's why we have those codes.
Correct.
Right.
So most of the zoning ordinance amendments and the, and the comp plan policies are things that are being carried forward from the original planning document that were adopted by the city and then repealed in, in two thousand thirteen, when we were not successful after a court battle through this. But they are all, they're all standing foundational amendments and comp plan policies that this community built for, for this growth plan and that this selection process is contingent upon.
Okay. Perhaps the platitude most appropriate of my feeling of where we're at with some of those very specific comp plan changes in code, zoning code changes, is I feel a little over my skis in how specific they are as a part of this package, given- my skis in how specific they are as a part of this package, given that usually it's well, A, fairly rare we change the zoning code in the comp plan and B, when we do it, it seems we get the whole chapter and we get, here's how it's written, here's how we're going to change it. And right now I feel like all we're getting are here, here's the new word or here are the new words. And so, you know, I had to pull out my old Planning Commission binder and I'm, I'm going page to page. And so to, to me, just those really minute words matter, especially and, and, you know, Wendy can probably nod along. When you go to bring a set of plans in, that's when all that comes to bear. And it's really depends on one word versus the other. And so I'm just, I'm just saying where my head is at on that, in that sort of hierarchical slide, that's why I'm trying to touch all of these because I, I just, I want that to be really meaningful.
Yeah. And I don't think Heather or I or anyone else on staff disagrees with that. I mean, those words are important and a lot of those words are being kind of surgically changed or added in response to some of the feedback we've received from the former opponents or concerns that the council has raised to make sure that i- if the city moves forward with ordinance tonight, that it's implemented in a proper manner.
About one hundred percent. You know, for example, a hundred percent appreciate the clarity you guys have already added to code eighty-six or whatever, right? Like we found that that's a little muddy and we were clearing it up as we go. So thank you for that. And then in another question in service of the highest part of that hierarchy of policy, have we, do we have anything in there or have we thought about ways in which we can put a governor on the speed at which developments can be phased in? So right, someone comes in with a five hundred unit development and we thought about or any interest in saying, okay, you can only develop a, you can only bring on units at this speed? I don't know if that's, if that gets at an issue we've seen in the last handful of developments as, as I feel like we've had, you know, what usually is ten, fifteen years of development slammed into four years. And maybe that's some of the friction that's being caused with, with some citizenry, citizenry, right? Oh, man, everywhere I turn, there's new houses being built and we're going to sprawl it out, sprawl it out. I don't know.
Just, just to clarify though, because there are a lot of urban myths in McMinnville right now about housing development. It's, it's, we are, in terms of the number of permits that we're issuing per year, we are still issuing less than we have historically issued, even the last four years. And the, and the reason I think that McMinnville citizens feel like there's so much growth happening in McMinnville is because it's all happening in one area, which is up by Hill Road and Baker Creek Road, because that is the last area where there's land available to develop. We are not, we are not issuing more permits than we have historically. To your question of governing the, the pace of a developer being able to build housing on their land, I'm actually, I'll defer that to legal counsel because I've never encountered that before.
I mean, I, I don't know if Amanda wants to jump in, but what I would say is that the governor is built in by the part of the proposal where we're going to be going through a master planning process. That is a governing process, a speed governing process of itself. It's going to require notice to the city and the larger community of what people are envisioning as far as development and buildout is concerned. It'll have, there will be opportunities throughout that process to provide input and to make changes to the proposal that comes before the city. And so I think the answer to your question is yes, there, there will be govern, governing mechanism in place and you, you see it here this evening and what's in front of you.
I'd also remind, Zach, remind you of how the city has actually used this in the past relative to system capacity for infrastructure, where, where system capacity for wastewater was constrained, there were constraints on the pace of development in certain areas. So that's another opportunity where you may have some constraints and where it may be appropriate to, to regulate the pace of, of development or growth in an area. But it really needs to tie back to a public purpose. I, I think the council would be wise not to wade too far into regulating the market in places where you might get out over your skis, to use your earlier metaphor.
I'll, I'll chew on those responses. Thank you. I think I can pick or show, you know, that these developments, which, which I would say large, large amount of people would say, yeah, these are, are kind of, I don't know, I don't like a better term, McMinnville style developments and these ones that we have are not McMinnville style developments, right? So, so whatever that magic feel is, I think you can almost pointedly say, point to one or the other and, and show it phased in more slow systematic blocks. And, and the ones that don't feel the McMinnville way, or as it were, were more just sort of larger and all at once. And so I, I can, I can try and better define, define that. And then the last of my three allowance questions each night is, one of the specific responses about, and it's more of a statement as I continue to think about it, maybe and less of a question unless you want to bring any of that answer here and elaborate, was around the, the street, the change of the street width designation. It was fascinating to read the, the studies that you guys had cited around, you know, the, the street width's down to twenty-eight, because I've rode bikes on there as cars have gone through and I think all, we all have walked on some of those and it, it feels different than the data suggests how safer you are. And so it was just, thank you for providing that. It was, I, I trust that data. It was, it was fascinating to read that sometimes you feel a little more congested on those just because there's less room, but it was fascinating to see the data suggest that it actually is safer, you have less traffic accidents as you decrease the width of those and it, it is a natural decrease to speed. So thanks for that answer and it was, it was just fascinating.
I, I would suggest, Counselor, though, when we do update, because actually this came up a lot in conversations that I was having with people who were calling in after they got their notices. Transportation is a very active dialogue in this community right now and
Always.
People are calling in about it and, and it was good to hear people actually talking about bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure as well. That's good to hear. And a lot of conversations that we had were about the need for more robust off-street bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure for people to get around town. So I think, you know, when we go to update our T S P, there's a lot of opportunity there.
Yeah, I think that, that might be the magic feels right solution, right? To the looks right, feels right, right? It, it, it feels right to just not be on the street anymore as, as a bicycle. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Zach. Again, I will ask if there's any counselors that have any other or any questions for staff at this time. Okay. Now, seeing that our questions from council have been taken care of at this time, we are now to, going to start the public hearing on the proposal. Our role is to listen to the public testimony and to ask clarifying questions when appropriate. Each person testifying will be allotted five minutes for their testimony. And I will give, I'll give a one-minute signal in the screen to let you know that you have one remaining minute left. We will start with people who have signed in in advance to testify. So when you start your testimony, please remember to include your name and address for the record. Claudia, who is first person to testify this evening?
Jennifer Redman Noble.
Jennifer?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Redman Noble. I live at thirteen five hundred Southwest Peavine Road. I am here representing two three oh one and two three oh three South Hill Road, thirteen four eighty, thirteen five hundred, thirteen seven hundred, sixteen two twenty and seventeen seven seventy-one Southwest Peavine Road. All houses owned and occupied by my family. I was here in nineteen ninety-four. I think most of you guys have all turned over since then, testifying about the urban growth boundary at that time coming into our property. And I was encouraging the growth to head towards where I felt like most of the jobs were, which was towards Lafayette and Carlton, which I still think is valid today. My family has been living and farming here since eighteen seventy-four. Cozine Creek runs right through the middle of our property. We are on Peavine and go along Hill Road there. I believe there's about twenty-eight acres that you've included of my land in the current U G B expansion. Having those acres doesn't really bother me as I'm very happy to say no to developers on my land. What really concerns me is the probability of having houses right along the border of my land as you go up your southwest expansion, it goes right along my border. And I've seen in the past, and I see it certainly still here in McMinnville, farming and houses right next to the edge of a farm don't coincide very well. Farming may not be labeled industrial, but it's very close to it. In commercial farming, we need to spray chemicals all throughout the year and, you know, we're dusty, we make a lot of noise, but the chemicals are certainly the biggest problem and worry for those of us in agriculture who need to keep farming up next to houses. So what I want to make sure that you guys remember is the farmland, if you happen to come up to it, that is not just vacant land waiting to be developed. Some of us want to keep continuing to farm for many more generations. And so there needs to be a buffer so that the homes and the farm can coexist long term. Because many people, well, they're like, well, then I'll just put my land in. Well, that's not what my family wants to do. We want to continue farming our land and it's very difficult. We already have intrusions by people, by dogs. I also raise livestock and so that's becoming even more of an issue, even where land is, where McMinnville is right now. And I feel like McMinnville is not addressing this issue at all of what we're going to do to the farms when they end up with houses right up next to them. And if we want to farm that way for the next fifty or a hundred years, what are they going to do? Are we going to be ten feet from a house? You know, is that how I'm going to have to try to be spraying? And if I put in more orchards and filberts and orchard sprayers, you know, it's, it's just a really difficult thing to be right next to each other. I know the common thought out there is that all towns must keep growing, we must always keep growing. I think that if we actually looked at Yamhill County as a whole, I think we would find that many of our smaller towns could really use a better tax base if, so they could have actually just grocery stores within their towns. I think they could use certainly a better tax base for their education systems. Certainly there's not equitable education in McMinnville and in a lot of our smaller communities around. I had three children recently gone through our school system and it isn't equitable, the education in our smaller towns. And they, they do the best they can, but they don't have the tax base. I really feel that we should be encouraging is the growth in, in areas like Dayton and Sheridan and Amity and Carlton to get those towns up to, you know, a more reasonable self-sustaining town instead of being satellites where they have to come to McMinnville to do everything. I think that puts people on the road more. People are always having to drive in to Mac to do everything and it's just more miles on the road, more commuting for people. And so I think going forward, that could be a lot more thoughtful for the, this area than just saying, oh, let's just keep putting more houses in McMinnville and turn us into another Beaverton, which is I think what people don't want here. I think when we look at these giant developments over on Baker Creek right now, I think that's a lot of our worst nightmare. So the land that my family has lived on and farmed for nearly a hundred and fifty years cannot be moved. But I think if McMinnville really means that this is an agricultural area, they've really got to look at putting houses right up next to farms who still want to farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Do we have any counselors that would want to have clarification of anything that Jennifer has talked about? Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be interested from hearing from staff about whether there's a, a practice or policy at the state level when it comes to urban growth boundaries, expansion about some sort of buffer areas. Is that something that has been done in other communities that you're aware of? Or could you address that specific part of the commentary, please?
Yeah. So urban rural transition is part of the goal in land use planning process in Oregon. I guess I would say it's, it's part of the land use planning process that is, has the least amount of attention to it. I do know that there are some communities, Redmond, for example, when properties came in to develop that were adjacent to agricultural lands, they, they had to create a buffer of a certain amount of feet between them and that agricultural land in terms of the development that occurred. What's tough here in McMinnville is that everything is, the land use discussion is, is so heightened in terms of land use efficiencies that having those discussions of buffers like that, that large buffer is going to be tough with the land supply that's available. However, that's a great discussion for us to have when we're going through the area planning process, is what does that look like in terms of the buffers and how, how can we create those so that, so that that transition exists?
Heather, if I might, I would, the other thing that I would add, Counselor, is that we did look at the urban rural interface as part of the evaluation for the study areas. And one of the reasons that Cozine Creek was selected as the, the, the boundary in the, in the southwest is because it provides, at least this was our thinking, that riparian zone provides a buffer between the houses. There, we, we may have been able to actually exclude some of the land north of Cozine Creek, but we decided that would just, that would be really awkward for anybody that was farming that area because you'd have just this small little wedge between the creek, which needs, which has a riparian area that needs to be protected and then houses right next to it. It would make it very difficult for anybody to farm. That sliver of land right above the creek. So we, we made the decision, we took the decision to extend the recommendation down to the edge of the creek. It doesn't include the flood plain and the flood plain and the riparian area adjacent to it is an opportunity to create a buffer, an enhancement of the habitat and the quality of that riparian buffer is one way that the community might be able to buffer those uses because it's a significant concern. One of the difficulties is just
It's a significant concern.
One of the difficulties is just
It's hard to find any place around McMinnville because you are
In a very rich agricultural zone where this conflict doesn't exist. And so pick your poison, it really kind of doesn't make any difference which direction you go. You're going to be adjacent to high value farmland regardless. The expansion direction you choose. So we tried to balance it as best we could and that's how we did it.
I guess I would say, I hear two concerns from Janet. One, one, I guess I would say
Jennifer.
Okay, sorry. My apologies. Janet, isn't it?
Jennifer.
Okay, sorry. My apologies. A concern of full buildout and how that impacts your farmland, but also a concern of as things build, how that will impact your farmland too. Because you have some farmland that's in the proposed U G B expansion area. And so I do think if, if that is something that, that's sort of the micro level as we go into this and do some more planning on that micro side, if we want to start having discussions about what that transition looks like, we can have those discussions and see how we can build that into the zoning ordinance for development as it comes in and occurs. The other thing that's Interesting to me is that there is a lot of parkland in this expansion plan. And a lot of it is in a greenway system. Proposed greenway system. So that proposed greenway system could serve as sort of a perimeter greenway. That is also a buffer between urban development and rural uses. Not, not a trail. That's discussed here in Yamhill County, a greenway, much bigger buffer. That's discussed here in Yamhill County.
Yeah, I think that's interesting. I mean, the thing about Cozine, I understand that's why you put my twenty-eight acres in. I mean, the thing about Cozine, I understand that's why you put my twenty-eight acres in. So, you know, I have my, Cozine runs right through the middle of my farm. So, except for right there, it is narrow right there, that one little spot and then it goes out much, goes out further to the, to the border now. So, you know, I understand where you're saying, well, there a creek could be a buffer, but I don't want it to get to the creek. I don't intend for it to ever get to the creek. And so I really need you guys to be really thoughtful about, about buffers. I've always thought, people should just grow towards where the jobs are, which I've always felt was Washington and Multnomah County. So I was always like, let's go towards Carlton and Lafayette. Of course, I live southwest of town, so.
So, you know, I understand where you're saying, well, there a creek could be a buffer, but I don't want it to get to the creek. I don't intend for it to ever get to the creek. And so I really need you guys to be really thoughtful about, about buffers. I've always thought people should just grow towards where the jobs are, which I've always felt was Washington and Multnomah County. So I was always like, let's go towards Carlton and Lafayette. Of course, I live southwest of town, so that's where I wanted to see it go. Of course, I live southwest of town, so that's where I wanted to see it go. And I think it's, for people who want to farm long-term, you can't take too much into consideration for allowing us to keep farming. Take too much into consideration.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your testimony. And, uh, Remy, thank you for the question. Thank you, Jennifer, for your testimony. And, uh, Remy, thank you for the question. Claudia, who do we have next? Claudia, who do we have next?
We have Joseph Wayne via Zoom, so go, we can go ahead and mute, unmute your mic.
Joseph? I think I'm unmuted here. Uh, my video says that the host has stopped. I think I'm unmuted here.
You're, you're, yeah, you're live, Joseph, so go ahead.
Okay, okay. Can you see me or just hear me? I can't tell.
Uh, we can just hear you at this point.
Can you see me or just hear me? I can't tell.
You could go ahead and turn your audio or your, uh, you could go ahead and turn your audio if you know where to do that on Zoom.
I do, Claudia, I think it's blocked on your end.
If you know where to do that on Zoom.
I do, okay, now it's on your end.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Mayor, good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Mayor, good evening, council. In pursuit of learning about the urban growth boundary and expansion, I recently read the, in pursuit of learning about the urban growth boundary. My name is Joseph Wayne, I live at 463 Heath Street here in McMinnville. My name is Joseph Wayne, I live at 463 Heath Street here in McMinnville. I think what was in the previous phase of the growth boundary was, I think it's called the Heiser Edition, southwest adjacent to the southwest section there. I think it's called the Heiser Edition in learning about the urban growth boundary. Southwest section there. Recently, I read the city center housing strategy document from the website. Beautiful, well-written, very inspiring document from the website. And I read the great neighborhood principles, very inspiring. And I read the great neighborhood principles talking about the future possibilities of what a residential McMinnville could look like. Thank you for both of those documents. I don't, I don't read a lot of the documents. I'm just become interested in it recently with this talk of the growth document. They were both just fantastic to read. With this talk of the growth boundary, I would like to express some concern here in my testimony, kind of in the spirit of, I would like to express some concern here in my testimony. Kind of in the spirit of, I forget the gentleman's name who brought the document, 1000 Friends of Oregon and the French county. I forget the gentleman's name who brought the document, 1000 Friends of Oregon and the French county. I have no association with either group. And also that, Mr. Steve Leonard said, I have no association with either group. But also that, Mr. Steve Leonard said, and my concern kind of is aligned with those for all of the, to use his words, a lot of pros in the great neighborhoods document. I really do hope that the expansion of the growth boundaries and the proposed usage in those neighborhood goals and zoning and the, uh, focus areas in those neighborhood goals and zoning and the, includes a thoughtful neighborhood character while really leaving room for that. Includes a thoughtful, that rural interface. I know where I live right on the boundary is, I think, right up against that urban rural interface. I have a cross from a big field against that drainage or waterways. I have a cross from a big field. I'm not entirely sure. There's a farm on the other side and I think that's what really attracted me to this area. I am clearly aware that, you know, in this testimony about urban growth boundary, the house that I live in, the property that I'm on is probably six or eight years ago or whenever it was, 2003 maybe, there was some other resident in McMinnville saying, you know, those guys building that development across the street, I can't believe this is going to block my views. Whatever, I am, you know, clearly aware of that sort of progression of those things. And I do also feel that the development that I'm in right now is very much a, I think was in one of those two documents, a monoculture of design and housing, sort of like two different models. Everyone is very square and doesn't have a lot of the, everybody is very square and zeal and the sort of character that I kind of, you know, looked at and saw as possible in that great neighborhood document, that city center housing plan. Saw as possible in the great neighborhoods document and the city center housing plan. And the great thing about where I live and the scenic aspect is that we're right up against the farmland, the interface between. The great thing about where I live and the scenic aspect is that we're right up against the farmland. Because there is that vague open space. And the thing that really makes the neighborhood singularly is the fact that there's that street up against the south side of Redmond Hill Park. When people can park and people bike and people play. And I don't know if that's, and people bike and people play. And I don't know if that's the general idea of a neighborhood activity center. I guess maybe the park is sort of in some way, you know, or that's the neighborhood anyway. Maybe the park is sort of in some way. But the thing that makes it, in my opinion, is the fact that there aren't a huge number of houses across the street adjacent to the park. There's just a big open space that makes it a lot of parking. Things flow through there pretty well because of a huge amount of parking. Things flow through there pretty well. And I realize that we can't all have Alpine Ave on every single block in McMinnville. As nice as that would be, I really do feel like there was a prize of, you know, at least the place that I live in, I think it's a prize in McMinnville. But, you know, at least the place that I live in, it's a beautiful, well-executed space. I'm happy to say it's in my town for sure. Well-executed space, I'm, I'm happy to say it's in my town for sure. You know, at the top of that great neighborhoods document, there's a photo of like a mixed-use neighborhood. It's got storefront, there's a photo of like a mixed-use neighborhood. It's got, you know, residents above. And I hope we can get to that kind of, you know, residence above. And I hope we can get to that kind of, within the areas that are being developed here. And it doesn't all just become tract housing, to echo what, council, saying, it doesn't all just become tract housing, to echo what. Also, just one more point regarding the West Hill section there at the bottom, also just the wetlands. My neighbors and I have recently been talking about the drainage in our neighborhood is a bit weird. My neighbors and I have often been talking, I don't know if this is something that council is aware of or if this is something that my neighbors and I have often been talking about. And also apparently for the people who own the farm next to it, I don't know if that was the lady who spoke. There are also apparently, there are some underground springs or aquifers or something there. That's just the discussion with my neighbors lately about the weird drainage. I've also been having a split. That's just the discussion with my neighbors lately about the drainage. That's something that I'm having on the split. City wants to direct to look into. Note that for the record here.
Thank you, Joseph. Uh, thank you, Joseph. Does any counselor need clarification regarding this testimony? Does any counselor need clarification regarding this testimony? Hearing none? Thank you, Joseph. Hearing none? Thank you, Joseph. Who do we have next, Claudia?
Next, we have Christine Anderson via Zoom. So we'll go ahead and unmute your mic and video. Anderson via Zoom, so we'll go ahead and unmute your mic and video.
Okay.
Christine, welcome.
Amy?
Yes, we can. Christine, welcome.
Hi.
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Christine Anderson. I live at, and farm the property at 4714 Northeast Riverside Loop here in McMinnville. I understand that many interest relations that must be met in a proposal such as this, and I know that it's not a cake walk, a cake walk that you guys have to decide what's going on here. So thank you very much for allowing the public to weigh in on this matter. Um, I'd like to raise some concerns. Our farm, Castor Farm covers two properties that are adjacent to one another. One which falls inside the UGB, which was incorporated in 2003, which is slated to be rezoned with this action and one parcel that lays outside of it. Our family has put our entire life savings in creating a beautiful, clean and open farm. We provide groceries for 70 families on a weekly basis, as well as provide countless community and youth educational opportunities regularly. Seeing the plan map is disheartening for our area. It proposes turning our property into a greenway and street grid with residential housing. When we first started farming at this location many years ago, we sought to buy the adjacent property that was being farmed at that time. We were outbid by a developer who profited by the farm at that time. Instead of housing development and has long since moved on. While we love our neighbors, that farm property has long since moved on. McMinnville planning has the ability to put together, as Mr. Wayne stated previously to me, has the ability to put together some detailed and creative plans. But after reading, listening and researching, I would like to note that independence D, there is no address to firms currently operating within these zones. I feel as though the city is selling out to the pressure from the state or under interest to meet a number game. We in the UGB have no voting representative to meet a number game. Within the city council, yet the decisions made here affect our properties greatly. Once this is approved, its effects will be felt for years to come, mainly being felt by those who come after us. With the profits going to a developer who does not necessarily have a stake.
Christine, we're having issues with your audio. Christine, we're having issues with your audio.
Turn off, maybe turn off your, your, your video and they'll give you one. Your, your video and they'll give you one.
No problems with that. Our inner is not the greatest always. Okay, is this improved? Our inner is not the greatest always.
It seems better, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, I'll continue. While I realize that no one is going to take my property away and start developing tomorrow, this proposal takes a long-range view of the direction that McMinnville wants to go. I feel it sends a message to me of the direction that we are in it. I've looked over the documentation on the soil classification and the intention of these lower-class soils for these types of projects. Well, that is very important. It doesn't necessarily match up with the reality of currently existing small farms that serve the community and that add the much-needed element of uniqueness to our community, that has been a hallmark of our city. Our children talk about the things they will do with the farm when it becomes theirs. With this action, McMinnville seems to be telling our family that as farmers, we and families like ours are a priority in the future of this community. I have additionally submitted written testimony raising a few additional issues in further detail. I appreciate your time and again, thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this matter. I appreciate your time and again, thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this matter.
Um, any counselor have a need, any, um, any counselor have a need, any, um, testimony clarified? Seeing none? Then I'm, I'm guessing, seeing none, we are to, I'm guessing, any more advanced signup testimony, Claudia? Any more advanced signup testimony, Claudia?
No, mayor, that was it.
Okay, do we have anyone in the city center that wishes to testify on this, on the proposal?
No, mayor.
Okay, so what that does is it takes us to those that are on Zoom. So what that does is it takes us to testify on this proposal. Please indicate your interest by raising your hand in the participant section of Zoom control or by sending a chat message to Claudia indicating that you would like to testify. To Claudia indicating that you would like to testify. At that time, please unmute your audio. We will unmute your audio and show your video for your testimony. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. So Claudia, do we have anyone that is on Zoom that would like to, Claudia, do we have anyone that is on Zoom that would like to, to testify?
Yes, we have Carrie Moser.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I, we can hear you and.
Excellent. Can you hear me?
I, we can hear you and.
Okay. Um, I don't know if the video is working, uh, whatever. Um, I don't know if the video is working. Carrie Moser, 2256 Southwest Redmond Hill Road. Carrie Moser, 2256 Southwest Redmond Hill Road. Borders on farmland being, that you want to add to the urban growth boundary. One of the issues I have is the high-density housing. I do not want multi-storyed structures staring down into my backyard in the back of my house. Multi-storyed structures staring down into my backyard. Multi-family housing or even two-story, single-family housing. You must take into account some kind of screening for those of us along that boundary. I've talked to my neighbors about it. They're all very concerned about the lack of privacy that would happen. I recognize that's probably part of the zoning issue, but I want to get it on the record now. I recognize that's probably part of the zoning issue, but I want to get it on the record now. I would also like to agree with what Jennifer said. Many of the things she said, I agree with this. Agree with what Jennifer said. Many of the things she said, I agree with this. Multi-family housing, we have no new industry here. These are commuters. Why can't the other cities solve their own housing issues? Why can't the other cities solve their own housing issue? The highways are already crowded. All these people are bringing is density and tax dollars to the city. They are not. Bringing is density and tax dollars to the city. Really contributing to the, to the financial growth of the city. They are commuters. And I realize everybody has to have a place to live. I totally get that. And I realize everybody has to have a place to live. A small charming town like McMinnville, which I chose because it was small and charming. Which I chose because it was small and charming. Should became a sprawling bedroom community. That development on the north of Hill Road is hideous. That two-story look-alike cram together houses, there is no charm on the streets, there's no mandatory tree, it's all about the dollars for the developer. And I object to that. I know I'm sounding kind of testy and exhausted, so forgive me. Don't feel defensive. It's not about you. Exhausted, so forgive me. Don't feel defensive. It's not about you. So those are the issues. I did write a letter last week. It was not listed on that mixture of written comments, but I'm adding a little to it now. There you go. I'm adding a little to it now.
Thank you, Carrie. Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of Carrie? Anything clarified regarding the testimony of Carrie?
It's not a need for clarification. Um, it's not a need for clarification, but in reference to, um, your statement that this is mostly commuter housing that is being added to. I was wondering if the planning department could reflect on that in terms of our housing needs analysis and, um, median family income for the area versus housing prices in the area and the ability of our current residents to afford housing. The ability of our current residents to afford housing.
So, uh, can you hear me? This is Heather. My computer crashed, so I had to join the meeting by phone. So, uh, can you hear me? This is Heather. My computer crashed, so I had to join the meeting by phone. Our housing needs analysis is done in concert with our economic opportunity analysis and it's meant to be housing that supports employment within McMinnville. So we look at the two hand in hand in terms of the need for jobs here and the growth for jobs and then the housing to support the workforce here for those jobs. That's the basis of the whole analysis. Is that what? That's the basis of the whole analysis. In terms of the market, is that what is buying the homes? I would say right now, because the homes are priced at such a price point that they are, because of our lack of housing supply, that our workforce is not able to afford them. And we are getting people who are unable to afford jobs, buying those homes in the community elsewhere. And the need right now is for workforce housing for people who are working in McMinnville but cannot live in McMinnville. For people who are working in McMinnville but cannot live in McMinnville. I also wanted to clarify for Carrie, I just wanted to let her know that, um, the letters that we have on our slide that were entered into the record tonight were the ones we received today and we entered yours, Carrie, into the record last night. Were the ones we received today and we entered yours, Carrie, into the record last night.
It is a part of the record, Carrie, and as is your testimony this evening. It is a part of the record, Carrie, and as is your testimony this evening. Heather, thank you for the clarification. Claudia, do we have, who would be next on our Zoom? Claudia, do we have, who would be next on our Zoom? Jerry?
Jerry Solon?
Um, my name is Jerry Solon. I live at 2166 Southwest Alexandria Street. And I don't even know where to begin. I'm just, my, my heart is just sunk. I don't even know where to begin. Because of what's going to be taking place in my backyard. Because of what's going to be taking place in my backyard. One of the things that, issues that are, number one is the traffic. The, um, issues that are, number one is the traffic. We live on a corner lot, so the, uh, traffic, it's called Catherine. So it's, it's just a dead end right now because it ends up in my backyard. It's, it's just a dead end right now because it ends up in my backyard. Plus, Alexandria Street right now is just, I mean, it's, it's growing so much because of all the developments that have happened already. And I really disagree about, and I really disagree, the need for more housing here in McMinnville. My God, there is just so many apartment buildings and so many developing houses that have already gone up. I just cannot, thousands of things that have already gone up. Other than like previous, uh, that we need more. People have, I spoke, that these are for developers. These are people that, that, that really, you know, these are people that, that want to, you know, line their own pockets, should I say. There is just absolutely, to me, there is absolutely no reason, there is just absolutely to me, there is absolutely no reason to develop areas that really do not need to be developed. I mean, McMinnville is, is, the whole feeling of, small town, the whole feeling of, is no longer there. And, you know, it, it's increasing our, it'll increase our tax issues, you know, it's increasing our, as it is, I don't know what the city of McMinnville offers to the public other than, you know, turkey ramen.[1779.12] as it is, I don't know what the city of McMinnville offers to the public other than, you know, turkey ramo. Or whatever. But, you know, I just. Like I said, excuse me, but I'm very emotional about this because I am terrified of the crime rate that's going to be going up. Because I'm terrified of the crime rate that's going to be going up. You name it. Like I said, all of this is taking place in my backyard. You name it. So, um, that's the piece concern I have. And like the last gal was talking about. I don't want these apartments looking in my backyard. I, I, you know, I just, yes. Looking in my backyard. I, I, you know, it just, yes. I just, that's.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there any councillor that needs to have clarification from this testimony? Is there any councillor that needs to have clarification from this testimony? Seeing none? Uh, Claudia, who do we have next? Seeing none? Uh, Claudia, who do we have next?
Mayor, that's everyone.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone on the phone who wishes to testify on this proposal? If so, please unmute your phone and let us know that you would like to testify. Please state your name and your address for the record. So anyone on the phone that's not on Zoom that would like to testify. So anyone on the phone that's not on Zoom that would like to testify. Please unmute your phone and let us know. Okay, hearing none? Um, that concludes our public testimony this evening. Does the staff have anything that they would like to add to the record at this time? Or does the city council have any additional questions for city staff? I'll open it up for, uh, questions for city staff. I'll open it up for. Uh, the staff presenting and city council now.
Just, just one comment. We're a little quiet for the most part, uh, in response to the, um, public statements that were made. I just wanted to thank the, uh, members of the public for coming in and taking the time to share your concerns about how the plan that we're looking at will affect you directly. Uh, the comments that have been made about the, uh, kinds of development that we've seen in the last few years. Are the points well made that we've seen in the last year. And I definitely appreciate all of the comments that were made tonight. That's all I have. Definitely appreciate all of the comments that were made tonight. That's all I have.
And I will reiterate that that's the purpose of three nights of ongoing public hearings is to give the public an opportunity to, uh, sharing their thoughts and their passion and their emotion. We've seen some of that and we understand your concerns. And, uh, that's why we're taking the time and your effort to give proper, uh, opportunity to share thoughts on that. Any other city?
Mayor, this is DJ Heffernan.
Any other city?
Yes. Uh, this came up from one of the, um, one of the staff members last night. And I said I would raise it today. For the benefit of, um, of citizens looking in. While there's been discussion about zoning, the, um, the plan proposal adopts zoning. The plan changes to the zoning code. But nobody's property will be rezoned as a consequence of this action. The plan amendments for the comprehensive plan, long range uses are amended. But on that, the county zoning amendment remains in place to be added to the urban program. And I just wanted particularly, um, I think for, um, Christine Anderson, that, um, your property isn't being rezoned as a consequence of this plan. You can continue to farm it. As a consequence of this, this really relates to things that are going to happen that, uh, down in, down in the future. And it's up to you to decide, um, to make that change. So I just wanted to add that clarification to make that change.
Thank you, DJ.
So I just wanted to add that clarification.
Again, any councillors, any parting thoughts this evening? Again, any councillor, any parting thoughts this evening?
Um, not relative to any points brought up, um, to the process. Just as we move, close the middle chapter, as it were, move towards tomorrow night's final chapter of the three nights. Chapter, as it were, move towards tomorrow night's final chapter. First reading, can you give us a preview of what tomorrow looks like as far as moving this ordinance forward? Can you give us a preview of what tomorrow looks like as far as moving this ordinance forward?
I'll bring Heather back on just to give us some insights from that. Heather, Heather back on just to give us some insights from that. Heather?
Tentatively, we've, we've put together a schedule tentatively. You can control the schedule. So tomorrow with the public hearing, you can decide to continue to continue it. So tomorrow with public hearing, you can decide to do so. You can also close the public hearing if you choose to do so. You can also close the public hearing if you close the public hearing. And have deliberation about it. Um, and then based on that, you can also consider a second reading of the ordinance. And then based on that, you can also consider voting to get to a second reading. And if you couldn't get there, then that would be rescheduled for a future second reading. And if you couldn't get there, then that would be rescheduled for a future night. Relative to all of this, because of the way it's set up with three consecutive nights of public hearing process, um, which we discovered last night. So I'm not sure I would ever do this again. But if you have questions, we have to resolve those questions as we go through the public hearing process because you're voting on a findings document. The findings document is the final product in terms of any amendments you want to make. And then the findings to support those amendments. So just like last night, if you have questions for us that you want us to continue to vet for you or bring more information to the table or answer or there is public testimony that you want us to come back with some additional information that you want us to come back to be able to do that for tomorrow night. Um, as we prepare the final findings document for you. Um, as we prepare the final findings document for you.
So any other thoughts, Zach, from that perspective?
If we unanimously pass, uh, first reading? If we unanimously pass, uh, first reading? Does that mean it, it goes to the second reading the same night? Or could we select to have a second reading? I guess I don't know why, but could just, we select to have a second reading?
So under the charter, uh, to do a second reading and pass the ordinance in the same, in that, the same meeting? That's, it needs to have unanimous approval of the council? If that doesn't happen, then what the council would need to do would be come back at a different night, a different meeting and conduct the second reading to pass it. And, and as we talked about last night, you pass it that night. And whether or not that's in the same night that you do the first reading or in a subsequent meeting? It doesn't become effective until 30 days after that.
Right? I just, I guess process in my head, I just feel like, I'd appreciate the weekend to just think about everything at the end. And I don't want to jeopardize, uh, moving this along if that's where we're headed. But if all it means is, uh, one person draws the straw and throws the no vote to do that, then that's what it is. But if we just do both redo that, then that's what it is. But if everyone else is doing the same way, we just say redo both, I'll do it. If Tuesday's dead, but where I sit now, unless something radically changes or even if something radically changes, it wouldn't like further submit me in this thought process. I still like the weekend to just ruminate over everything we hear over these three nights. And the weekend to learn more about responses and then, you know, resolve the Tuesday. That's where I mean, learn more about responses and then, you know, resolve the Tuesday.
And as you know, we do have a, uh, we have a scheduled, um, city council on Tuesday. We have a scheduled.
Right, which is part of why I like also doing it then to give us the weekend. But it also is back to that normal schedule. Just in case someone managed to feel like, so this was out of sequence and you'll just, in case someone managed to feel like.
I think that's a completely appropriate item for discussion once you get to the end of the hearing tomorrow night and the council moves to deliberations, that the council can deliberate about procedure going forward.
Then perhaps to advance notice the rest of the council tonight. Then that's where I am currently thinking on how we do that forward.
And I would ask everyone on the council will be thinking in that, uh, where they sit as we go through that. Cause we will have the first reading tomorrow evening. And then, uh, but as, as Zach has said, that, uh, we do have a scheduled, uh, council meeting on Tuesday, which is, uh, just, uh, three days later. Tuesday, which is, uh, just three days later. Any other discussion this evening? Any other, any other discussion this evening? This concludes our public hearing. Okay, with that, this concludes our public hearing.
I just wanted to ask another, uh, clarifying question that goes on with Zach's, um, questioning. Clarifying question that goes on with Zach's, um, questioning. That, if Zach is informing us. Regardless of how he might ultimately feel about this, his, his intention will be to cast a no vote in order to prolong the vote. The final vote. To, in order to prolong the vote. From a procedural standpoint, when we're, um, from a procedural deliberations tomorrow, instead of, uh, at the end of deliberations tomorrow. Creating a scenario in which somebody would, uh, be voting one ways simply to leverage an outcome that really isn't an outcome that's related to the, the material or the ordinance before us. Wouldn't it be feasible at that moment for the council to discuss delaying the first reading for the council to discuss delaying the first reading?
Delaying the second reading. So it would be, it would be, you may recall, uh, earlier this year, we had a similar situation come up where the first reading was passed and the, and the second reading was conducted, but it wasn't passed unanimously. So at that point, it had to come back to the council at a future meeting. What I think you'd be discussing when you get to delivering that point is whether or not you even want to go through. If you know, if the council knows for a fact that that's the way that things are looking, if the council knows for a fact, whether or not you even want to go through that process or just forego it and automatically agree to, uh, move the second reading on to the next meeting the following Tuesday.
So we don't have to have a unanimous one if we wait and do it at another meeting?
No, it's just to do it on the second reading on the same meeting, that same day. It's just to do it on the second reading.
The same question, a different way. It could be two unanimous votes held on separate nights. First reading, second reading, six oh, six oh. We just go into it, we say, but we would like to split it up.
That's right. And to even get into finer detail, it could be six oh on first reading, second reading that same night, five one. That doesn't satisfy the charter requirements. Come back at the next meeting and pass a six oh. Then, uh, or before you get to that five one vote, just agree to wait.
We can have a discussion so it will be completely clean, both first and second reading.
That's right. But, but by voting no on the second reading that night doesn't mean that the ordinance doesn't pass. It just means it has to have a, a second, second reading.
And, and I think that's where Remy was maybe going because, you know, we have been working on this so long. Uh, I can understand having a weekend just to bring your thoughts together. Just if there was anything that you'd overlooked and, yes, is a tremendous amount of reading and studying. And secondary, we've heard a lot of good testimony that we might want to think about over the weekend. And I think that's where Zach and I talked about that a little earlier in the week. And I, Zach and I, I think we can have those discussions tomorrow. And I, so does that answer your question, Remy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Man.
So does that answer your question? Jeff?
And Mayor, oh, it would require, I think there was that perspective for the council to choose not to move the second reading tomorrow night. As for the council, what the council is, not to move the second reading tomorrow night.
Okay, good. And so we'll have that in the discussion piece, uh, tomorrow. Okay, good. And so we'll have that in the discussion piece.
Second meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, again, any other comments by councillors this evening?
Was that down into the weeds enough for you?
Comments by councillors this evening?
Mayor, if I, if I could just suggest that if, if councillors know of some concerns or anything that they want clarified before the weekend? It'd be great for you to share that with us and we can spend the weekend clarifying it. Be coming back to you.
But that's what the weekend's for, to figure out what we want.
I know, I know.
But that's what the weekend's for, to figure out what we want.
How do we get you a final findings document on Tuesday? If we don't hear about it?
It kind of evens all of us to get our reading done before the weekend and then kind of give it some thought over the weekend. I mean, uh, these people have been doing this 24/7 for months now. I mean, I'm sure they'll do more, but it might be nice if we were prepared now. I mean, I'm sure they'll do more.
Just a point of fact, it's not to spin it, it's just to think about everything and, and let it all sink in. I'm not asking to think about everything.
I think you're gonna have a bunch more questions. I know, but I think they're.
Well, I mean, in fairness, you can't get a massive voluminous document. Well, I mean, in fairness, you can't get a massive voluminous document. Have conversations about it and expect everything to, to shake out conversations about it. And expect everything to shake out. I think actually the product is far along in terms of the development. But I certainly think Zach is very reasonable to want some more.
I'm not arguing with that. It'd be nice if you have questions to bring them up tomorrow.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
All I, all I was suggesting is if you know things now or tomorrow, just share. You know, if, if there are questions you still have tomorrow, between now and tomorrow, just share with, share what you can with us tomorrow. I, between now and tomorrow, just share with, share what you can with us tomorrow. Is to support you so you feel as fully informed as possible to feel comfortable making your decision. So we just want to make sure we're getting you the information you need to feel. So we just want to make sure we're getting you the information you need to feel comfortable making your decision.
Okay, well, that concludes our public hearing for tonight. We will continue this public hearing tomorrow night, December 3rd at 6 o'clock. For those that testified this evening, you are welcome to join us again tomorrow night. However, everyone will only have the opportunity to testify once in these proceedings. Uh, this meeting is adjourned and it is 8:05 PM. Uh, this meeting is adjourned and it is 8:05 PM. In the proceedings within our community. Have a good evening. In the proceedings within our community. Have a good evening.